That is our public forum. We have... Yes? Yes. Thank you. On my left, we have our trustee and now world famous whiteboard. If decision making gets too difficult, we can wheel that out. A fine selection of whiteboard markers are available. We have apologies from his worship, the mayor. Wow, time will tell. We have apologies from the mayor and councillor Staines for lateness, for absence. I will move that we accept those apologies. Seconding councillor Wilson. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. And I'll move that we confirm the agenda, noting that we'll be operating under option C of standing order 2.1 regarding the moving, seconding and speaking to amendments. Seconding councillor Benson-Pope. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Anything to amend on the interests register? There being none, I'll move...
Yes, yes, sorry.
Councillor Gary.
Yes, spelling error in the... I think it's... I don't know which one it is. Just give me a moment.
It ends with an 's', not a 'd'.
Yeah, that's right. And also, I'm Benaportia Thiemann Gallery Committee.
Thank you. Anything... although, I mean, I think, yeah, we noted those at the meeting yesterday, so I don't know if we need to make any further amendments to that. So I'll move that we note the interests register and the associated management plans. Seconded councillor Law Fissor. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Part A reports. We have the quarterly report from the Ataga Museum. Unfortunately, Dr Griffin and his team are otherwise occupied, which does make asking questions of the report difficult. We can direct them to our council appointees on the museum board if anybody has anything pressing to ask, or similarly, we could... we can log any questions people might have and forward them to Dr Griffin in due course. However, people want to approach that, as found by me. Councillor Wilson?
Just for clarity, it wasn't so much that they're not available, they hadn't been told the meeting was on this morning, so they couldn't make themselves available. And regrettably, they only heard about the meeting yesterday. It's one of those, because it's an unscheduled, otherwise unscheduled, meeting.
Thank you for that helpful clarification. Councillor Benson-Pope?
Well, I think it's unfortunate the director's not here, but that notwithstanding, this report is always one of the more interesting and more informative reports that we receive, and this particular volume of it is no different. So I think it would be appropriate to pass on our continued congratulations for the momentum that the museum continues to develop in Dunedin. I think it's fantastic, part of what's happening in Dunedin.
Yeah, thank you. We have an exciting new science discovery centre competing for our attention by the time this next quarterly report rolls around, all things going on time and on budget, as we assume they would be. Anything further that people would like conveyed? Councillor O'Malley?
Yeah, what the established 1868 exhibit. What exactly is... can I just ask the question that we handed on? What exactly is that exhibit? Is it related to settling of Ataga by Europeans, or... So just, I basically... if you can just convey on to...
What established 1868, is it an exhibition or a permanent gallery?
Or what...
Do you, page 22 of the report... Shed any light on that?
Through the chair, I believe it is an exhibition. Surrounding the establishment of the museum, I believe.
Of what?
Celebrating the establishment of the museum and that.
Oh, the museum itself?
Yes, that's what I believe. It's an exhibition.
Councillor Gary?
I don't know that this can be answered, but I'm interested to have it conveyed. On page 20, there's a note about marketing tourism strategy currently being revised to bring in more cruise ship passengers. I'm interested to know what the obstacles... I don't believe they have a lot of cruise ship passengers currently. Would that be correct? Do you know that? Councillor Wilson?
They, at times, have had in the past. One of the things is they open at 10, and often, if you're the first thing to... off the cruise ship, you need to be open before then. So they're looking, and also looking at how they can package a tour. But I think the cruise ship passengers have got wary of prices of tours booked on board, and so they like to do their own thing, and therefore, they're not booking. They don't really have a booking product other than directly off the cruise ship. So that's...
Which are the if I tease?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for our well-prepared museum board representative? There being none, would someone like to move that we note the report? Moved councillor Hall, seconded councillor Wiley. Any discussion? It's already been had in questions, I feel. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item six, social wellbeing advisory group. Welcome, Ms Gunn and Ms Graham, I understand, speaking to this. Welcome. Would you like to introduce it or speak to it?
No, if that's all right.
That's perfectly fine.
Hopefully.
Any questions of the report? Councillor Benson-Pope?
Just in terms of the structure, I take it from reading this that it's modeled on the successful structure of Te O Turoa, in terms of the partnership and the way community representatives ought to be appointed and so on. If that's the case?
Yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Moved the recommendations, all of them. Moved councillor Wilson, seconded councillor Staines, who has joined us. Welcome. Your lateness had been upgraded or downgraded to an apology, so... Like Lazarus is back. Any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against? That is carried. Item seven, Sami's community engagement. Ms Graham and Mr Monk, welcome. The floor is yours if you choose, or we can go straight to questions if you'd prefer.
If it's all right through the chair, happy to go straight to questions, as council considered this and made the recommendations on these steps in June.
Thank you. Councillor Lord?
Yeah, my question just relates to if we go with the recommendation here, which I'm sort of happy enough to support, but the question would be if we get to a position where we find that it's, on full examination, an extremely expensive option, this does not commit us, these recommendations today don't commit us to anything?
No, there would be a small... well, a small... there would be a cost in holding the building while the work happens until we report back, but no, there is no obligation and the decision would fall to the committee in November next year about what they wanted to progress.
An advantage within that is that by bringing together a discussion with potential partners, they may... we may identify individuals or organizations who want to contribute financially to a project as well, which would be an advantage.
Councillor O'Malley?
Just really nailing down that point. So basically, we're very open in terms of going forward in terms of the business case and the governance structure, and that in fact, the business case may in fact speak to what the governance structure will look like as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Councillor Alder?
So just following up from Mike. So I like the look of option one, but does that preclude option two and three being on the table should the feasibility study come back again? So that's what I was asking.
No, those options aren't precluded.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Councillor Wiley?
I... thank you. I take it through the consultation, the public and community engagement, that there was really no mention of budget or dollars or anything like that, in the sense of how people engage. So if, say, a level of engagement, if there was going to be up to $3 million spent, it was going to be, this is what they thought, if it was three to five million, or this is what we thought, or if it was over five million, this is what we thought.
We followed the brief that council had given us, that this was a dreams and vision type of consultation, so we had very simple questions and we didn't put any framework around that, because that was what the committee had requested that we do.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Vandervass?
In option one, it refers to the building leasehold. Do we have any information on what it would cost a free hold? Do we know what we are facing in terms of leasehold land rental? And is that liable to change in the future?
At this stage, we have a rent holiday with the landowner, and they are keen, as part of the next steps, to engage with us further on how that might look. But at this stage, they have indicated a willingness to consider continuation of the arrangement we have currently, but we haven't investigated the free holding option yet. That would form part of the next steps.
Okay. Given that the quality of a holiday often depends on how long it is, how long is it?
At this stage, we have two years.
Wonderful, thank you. And the final comment on this item is a suggestion that has come from a number of people that we restore the front of Sami's, because it looks ugly and ridiculous currently. Is there any suggestion that the restoration of it might be a facade that would be similar to the original, or at least in keeping with the Vogel Street precinct?
That is one of the options that we will investigate further. As I understand it from talking to the structural engineers, the current front wall of Sami's is actually an internal wall, so there would be potentially something needed to be done at the front regardless, and so that will form part of probably what we then bring back to this committee for further discussion.
So will we get to look at an option which gives a facade that has a similar look, perhaps, to what was originally there? The beautiful facade that was there?
As part of the development of the business case, that will be an option, and it might be, we've said that we will continue to report back on progress as we develop the business case, that may be one of the progress points that comes back to the committee, depending how that business case goes.
Thank you.
Councillor Alder?
When the business case or feasibility study is put together, is there a view to also going back to the community with those kind of options that it... because in fact, their first survey was a scoping thing, which was, you know, very successful, but going back to the community with a number of options again, or what's the story there?
Well, I suppose one aspect of that is when we start to get potential partners and stakeholders around the table to talk, all of those partners and stakeholders would bring their constituencies' views with them, and so that's one way that we'd ensure that, you know, that the discussion was reflective of community views. There's absolutely, we have took, we have said that there would be an option for, or that there would be an opportunity for the community to have further say about the direction of those, so there's that. I think that we can come at that from both of those angles.
Further questions? Councillor Gary?
I noticed on page 43, point 16, it talks about the respondents around future use of the building were generally private individuals rather than potential partner or stakeholder organization. Do you however get the sense, as I do, that there are certainly people out there who are very interested in this going forward?
Um, yes.
Nothing further. Councillor Benson-Pope has indicated a willingness to move something.
I'm happy to move option one, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Seconded councillor Wilson. Would you like to speak to that?
Briefly, I think the foresight demonstrated by the staff who moved very quickly, with inappropriate authority to make sure that the building wasn't lost, should be commented on. I think that was an entirely sensible decision. We've only got to look at a certain other site, which I won't mention elsewhere, in the area, that has sat fallow as an at-grade car park for far too long, since an unfortunate demolition by neglect, and the potential for that to happen with this site was the same, which would have been a true eye sore in the middle of a rapidly redeveloping precinct. And for those of you who haven't seen what's happened in the last little while, since councillor Hall's bluestone was so tastefully installed in the new Pocket Park, have a look at the two new cafes that are developing. So I don't think there's any doubt about the momentum that's been developed down there and the potential for the future. And I know some of the staff and the adjacent buildings are more than delighted at the retention of the building. That's not to say that there aren't some big challenges ahead, obviously strengthening and fire protection and a new facade. All those things are going to be things that are considered and will come back to us, but I think the position we're in at the moment is the correct place to be, and we have to work with that community. There's no debate, of course, about the extent of community support for a use similar to what it once was, whatever that might, you know, as indicated in the consultation. So I think we're progressing in the appropriate direction, and we'll have to cut our cloth according to costs as they become quantified.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor O'Malley?
To follow up from councillor Benson-Pope's last statement, I think that while there's a huge amount of public support for doing this, I think that's pretty clear, and I do like the consultation that went on, we now face the next part, which is the detail. And I basically wish you good luck in your, in what I think will have to be a fairly important juggling act here between achieving the ends that we want to achieve and maybe getting the council's burden appropriate. Amenity spends are incredibly important for cities, and I do generally support them, but we also must be keeping into account that we're still living in a constrained environment. Thank you.
Councillor Staines?
I'm very supportive of the direction this motion will take us. If we look back at the original vision, for what's become known as the Warehouse Precinct, it was that it would be precinct in which there were creative businesses, so be that artists or designers of electronic gear or software companies, but that creative sector. And what would be more appropriate than to retain what has been a very significant theatre in Dunedin's history and return it to being a performing arts centre? So we have to go through the process, but I'm hopeful that the end result will be that we can get it back to its original glory, be it with a modern facade that's sympathetic or with a reproduction facade. But I think it's a key element of the development that's happening in that warehouse precinct, and I'd also like to thank staff for the quick actions they took to protect our opportunities for that building, because it so easily could have, those opportunities could have been lost.
Thank you. Councillor Vandervass?
The restoration of the facade, I can see as being the, one of the major pluses of this development, but also potentially one of the major stumbling blocks if we are simply to get a business case based on the use of the building. A period facade restoration is unlikely to be achieved by any owner other than the DCC, because it's only the DCC that has the responsibility and the means to further the period ambience of Vogel Street precinct. The business case that comes forward, I hope, will recognize that there is a real value in continuing the look of the facade, especially since that whole corner now facing the bridge is essentially completely restored, and that the missing tooth of Sami's is the one and most important facade, I think, that still needs to be done in the area. Councillor Benson-Pope has quite rightly expressed concern about the current at-grade car park, and I think we share a similar view on the necessity of having a period facade, especially since we still have the photos of how beautiful that facade used to be. However, I think there is the possible opportunity, given very plain roller door technology and the artwork that we've seen around the place, to, if those car parks are still required, and they certainly have been extremely well-used for all the functions that I have been part of in Sami's over many years, that we could in fact have the lower part of the facade in fact simply painted on and roller doors come up and down and still have the at-grade car parks if that was required. So what I would very much hope is that whatever business case comes back to us looks at the fundamental importance of maintaining the facade, but also tries to not compromise the functionality of a building that needs a lot of stuff moved in and out of it on a regular basis if it's to have concerts, if it's to have events, and remembering also that there's enough height at the back of the stage for a decent fly tower. I mentioned the fly tower with a bit of trepidation, because I know how much these things cost, having been through the Regent Theatre fly tower redevelopment some 10 years ago. But we have enormous potential in this building, and the DCC, I believe, is the only owner that can realize this potential. And the potential is both functional and aesthetic, and I don't fancy the people who are going to have to put forward the business case that's going to be able to balance all of that, but I just flag that I hope that they will at least attempt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wiley?
Yes, I will be supporting this, especially as it will be detailing costings and timeframes, but also when we get the report back, it refers to the consideration of the project's feasibility and affordability. And I think the one part that really worries me is this, it'll be interesting to see how big the can of worms is going to be on this building, because I don't think it's going to be cheap, and we all have to go into this with an open mind, that actually, sometimes, you know, you may have to walk away from something if it is going to be over the top or the cost benefits don't really meet our community. So I will be supporting it, but at what cost and not with an open chequebook.
Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Ms Chairman. I take the view that this is a huge opportunity, and it's great that we had the youth council, Action Council here this morning, because I would say that this is one building or one potential use that would really talk to the youth of Dunedin, more than a lot of other projects. So I think I'm excited by that. But I think one can talk about business cases, and one can get very financial and worry about all of those sort of things. We have encouraged so many building owners to go in with an open chequebook. We've criticized them when they've done neglect, are the landowners have neglected properties. This is our one time, we're going in and looking at a building to complete that area. And I think we have to be really careful about how we try and weigh up a business case, because the reality is, is if we don't invest, and that building does have to be pulled down, it would absolutely undermine every other bit of dollars that we've already put into that area. And I think, having sat through rates relief discussions about why we invest rates relief or heritage funding money, the quid pro quo of putting the money in is far outweighed in the long term in other measures than necessarily just on the value of the land. So I'm really concerned that any, this talk of a business case and those sort of things are going to stack up necessarily. I don't think they will, but I think what it would stack up for the city in much broader sense, in unmeasurable words, is really excites me. And, you know, if you look at, I'm not a muso, and I didn't go to concerts and do all those sort of things as a youth, I must be into it elsewhere, but I have to say that if you look at around the country and the number of venues that have closed down and been pulled down, this would be the site in New Zealand that could be the actual hall of fame for music, and we had the Appra Awards here this year. I can't think of any site that has a reputation for New Zealand music so long, of such an extent, that wouldn't deserve to have that honour. And so I'm really excited by the potential that may come out of it. It may not be for music, it may be for other performing arts, but it's going to be really exciting.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Gary?
I would like to concur with councillor Wilson and others who have spoken in support of the project. Obviously, there are going to be economics involved with this and business cases, but I think what we've got to do is start with the best-case scenario, the best we can do. And basically, my message would be, let's be bold, let's be creative, and also let's remember that in the arts community, this very quick response from our staff and from council to save this building has led to an air of real excitement in the arts community in Dunedin, and it also speaks to this council's commitment to the arts. So I'm definitely going to be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Further speakers? Just for mine, I'd like to echo the comments. It's really that has been lavished upon staff as we've gone through this agenda item for the prompt securing of this building, and I think that that has been validated by the feedback that we've received and is summarized in this report. Certainly no clamour for raising the building or flicking on the building, there's a serious community appetite for this remaining, an asset for our community and for this council to invest in that to some degree. And it's certainly been reinforced by the constant stream of inquiries we get from events producers and touring bands and people planning conference dinners, looking for venues of this stature. So this is not just something that is, as has been pointed out, keenly felt locally, but certainly nationally as well. And so I think that's really exciting. The excitement is a double-edged sword. I would have liked us to have been in a position where we could have had a more detailed and robust conversation around budgets as part of our 10-year plan and being able to assess this against the other competing demands that we have over the next 10 years. But that said, we're better off doing something right than doing something quickly, and I think there is a real opportunity in the parallel process around the business case planning work and the governance arrangements and the conversations that we can have with our community around where that money might come from, that which doesn't come from the collective pockets of the city. So that is, I mean, it remains a genuinely exciting process, and hopefully by the next year of our 10-year plan, we'll be able to have that conversation through the annual plan process, which will no doubt invite public submissions and hold public hearings on. So I fully support it and look forward to the next stage. Councillor Benson-Pope, do you wish to speak in reply?
Just briefly, first of all, I'd like to assure colleagues that my decision and views on this matter are in no way influenced by my contribution as a boy soprano in the chorus of Bizet's Carmen, which I will share with you later, should you wish to hear it, because I still know the words. However, when councillor Wilson has alluded to the historical context and the political context of this council's involvement in heritage protection, I think I should say, first of all, I'd like to make a brief comment and tribute to Robert Tong, as former city architect, who passed away a week ago. I'll do that more formally in due course at a council meeting, but I mention it because this city, under his guidance and advice, has done extraordinary things. We're sitting after all in a building that was bastardized by previous councils, which has been beautifully restored. And similarly, one of the key interventions that this council made was, and it's first one actually, in heritage protection, as far as I'm aware, was with the restoration of what used to be known as the Crown Clothing Building on the corner of Pitt Street, New Bold's Bookshop, for those of you who read. And that replica building that is there now on that key corner was largely funded or significantly supported by the city. And of course, we know that we put some funding, not enough, but that's another story for another day, into the Heritage Fund, which supports all sorts of owners all over town to do the right thing. So I think it's appropriate for us to follow that model in terms of a key building that is now in our stewardship. that model, in terms of a key building that is now in our stewardship. The only other comment I'd like to make is, I think we should also acknowledge a debt of gratitude to the owner, who are certainly aware of, they're more than aware of their responsibilities to the heritage buildings of which they are stewards, and have made, and they, as a company, have made considerable, put considerable support into appropriate strengthening and restoration in several places, in George Street and elsewhere. And their attitude around supporting us in this initiative is no different. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put it, all those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. All that remains, then, is items for notification of, of the chair, which is a tacit agenda item, it would appear, in this instance, beyond making contact with the breastfeeding network and progressing their work with staff. Is there anything else that people would like to raise for attention between now and our next committee meeting in February? councillor Gary?
Was there anything further we could do with the Ataga Arts Society to progress that relationship?
I don't know. Are you suggesting something?
Yes, it sounded like continuing the relationship and strengthening that was, the flow of information was what was alluded to.
I can follow that up with, our arts advisors, who I know are in regular contact with the Arts Society, but that's fine.
Through the chair, I was going to offer to answer to say exactly the same thing. We do have a meeting coming up with the Arts Society to talk about their programme for the coming year.
Great, thanks. Nothing further? Well, that brings the meeting to a close. We'll, we'll adjourn for five minutes, and be back with planning and environment. Thank you.